All right, it is 5:30, time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, first thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any modifications, Commissioners Cephalish or Commissioner Hayes?
I have none.
I have none either.
All right, then I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Moving along to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried, thank you. Moving forward, item number three, public hearings. Public hearing to consider condemnation of 800 East Edison as dangerous and unsafe. David?
Mayor, the family is all gathered this week for Niwala. They all came home and they are having a family meeting this week. So they asked us to adjourn for 30 days. They also asked for a copy of our demolition policy and all that so they could go over everything and they promised us they would have a decision later this week and we'd be able to bring that back to the commission next month on what they're going to do with the property.
All right.
So we would ask that you adjourn until next month.
All right. I'm sorry. Computer's just going a little haywire here. Okay, back in. All right, so I know the family and I know the background on it. Hopefully they'll come up with a decision to do what's best for the family, so I'm in agreement of that. So at this point, we will just table it or adjourn it to what date?
November 18th at 5:30 PM.
Okay, so that'll be the motion. Will, do I have a second for that?
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Item B is a public hearing for public comment on the closeout of CDBG-CV-033 grant. Lacy, how are you?
I'm good. This is just the last step of the closeout process for this grant. We are required to inform the public what these dollars were, how they were distributed in our community, and then allow any public comment. So this grant, the CDBG-CV grant, was a two-part grant, one for economic development microgrants, which we received $132,000, and the meal programs was $35,000. And these funds were dispersed through, throughout the city limits of Independence. There was an online application that was rolled out where businesses could apply if they met the certain criteria of the grant. Of those applicants, we assisted 17 businesses that retained 40 jobs, of which 88% were low to moderate income individuals. And with the meals program dollars, we assisted five meal programs in our community.
So at that point, we've expended all the money?
Yes.
That those grants were awarded?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anyone that would like to address the commission on the closeout of the CBG-CV-033 grant? There aren't none, so I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any comments that you would like to make and address this time?
Yeah, I have no questions or comments.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moving along. Item four, items for commission action. A, consider proposal from Trainer HL for additional civic engineering and landscape architectural services associated with the public improvements of Myrtle Street, public alley south of 1916 City Hall, and a city-owned parking lot redesigned north of Myrtle Street. Vance, are you on the phone?
I am here, but Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for having me here this evening. What we have in front of the commission is a scope of work that's based off of discussions that we've had with the city on how to handle Myrtle Street as well as the public parking, the redesign of that public parking lot on the north side of Myrtle Street as well. In the description, you'll see that we tried to describe the work, the scope of work that the civil engineer would provide, as well as making sure that we broke the fee down to also show the different phases of design. And as with other components of this project, we will present to you at schematic design to make sure that what we've understood and what design solutions we come up with is something that the city commission wants and likes before we move into the construction document phase. And so we've separated the work for Myrtle Street from that for the public parking garage just in case you had a desire to do one and not both. But I'm certainly here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, Vance, thank you. I'm going to open that up to my commissioners.
So what you're proposing is a $55,200 for the total project. That's from schematic through completion of construction?
That is correct, Commissioner, yes.
And this includes the resurfacing of the alley south of the 1916 City Hall also?
Yes, it does, and that was a discussion point with the commission the last time we met. We, I think, all realized that the alley paving south of the City Hall parking area is in deteriorated condition and it would be an appropriate time to take care of that alley at the same time.
So on the lot north of Myrtle Street, the extent would be the private drive behind the office building at the corner of Laurel and Sixth? And it includes the alley east of the lot also?
It does, yes. And we would be anticipating, of course, that some of the drives that access on to Sixth Street might certainly go away or be redesigned, but the alley is something that would certainly be necessary for entering and exiting that parking area as well.
So this project will better utilize parking area for public and also then with the portion of Myrtle Street address some of the parking for the police cars that we discussed earlier?
Yes, Commissioner, you know, based on the discussions with the police department, having their vehicles closer to the City Hall building certainly is an advantage to them and is necessary to make sure that they can enter and exit the site quickly and easily without having to cross a public street in order to get to their vehicles.
Did I understand in your proposal, you talked about when you're going west on Myrtle since we're closing and vacating from the alley to Sixth Street, that there will be like a cul-de-sac turnaround for the vehicles? It won't be just a dead-end street?
So that's correct. We will need to coordinate with the city and fire department to make sure that there is adequate circular turning so that as somebody may come down on Myrtle Street, it doesn't just die in, it doesn't end in a dead-end street. And the anticipation is that we would have to work through of what that connection is to that alley that you just described on the east side of the parking lot.
Okay.
And I do have Matt Murphy, who is a civil engineer on the project. He is joining the meeting, and so if you do have any other specific questions, we can always ask Matt to answer them as well.
Scheduling of the work, would that coincide with the renovation of the 1916? Or can this be a standalone since some of the work is done outside the scope of construction with tie-ins of utilities and such?
Yes, Commissioner, I think that's a very good question. The intent, our intent was that it would actually be handled separately. Obviously, with the city having a contract with a construction manager as part of the project, this scope can always be rolled in to their scope of work, but it certainly does not have to be completed when the construction documents and the bidding occurs for City Hall.
This is Vance, this is Matt, I'm online. Sorry, I was having some problems, but to reiterate that, we were going to track this as two separate ones.
Pardon me. Is there any way we can amplify Matt so we can hear him better?
Matt, could you speak up a little louder, please? Matt?
Certainly, just a second, is that, is that better?
Oh, that's much better, yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm traveling today, so my technology is a little bit trickier. We were tracking it separate, Vance indicated, but there is definitely going to be some coordination, especially for the public improvement side of things, for the cutoff of Myrtle and the alley improvement from the south side of City Hall. Those will be, we definitely have those coordination items tied in even though we'll be producing them as two separate sets of documents.
Okay. I know we jumped into looking at the renovation. We haven't really covered why this was being addressed at this time. Some of the issues, Kelly, you might help too, that we've noticed, the parking spaces aren't adequate for modern cars, the circulation is...
It was also in the ADA consent to get that parking lot to ADA standards.
So instead of just doing piecemeal on it, it seemed like the appropriate time to do a total redesign to make it more efficient and work better for businesses downtown or other functions?
Yes, there's several issues with that parking lot and the medians and things like that. And the flow of traffic is, needs to be reconfigured.
If I remember right, didn't we have a citizen come to the commission a few years back talking about that issue of pulling out on Sixth Street with some of the parking and the vehicle locations that it blocked the view of exiting the parking lot?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hayes?
Well, I recognize the importance of compliance with our ADA plan, and it's regrettable that this has co-mingled with the, with the, the construction project as I would, I think that we need to address the parking lot issues sooner rather than later. And I would hate that the parking lot renovation be delayed should the construction, should it be tied with the construction. I would, I would prefer to see these segregated and not co-mingled so that they can be assigned and worked independently. But it's been suggested then that there is some kind of cost advantage, but do we know what that cost advantage would be to roll it in with a larger construction project? How many thousands of dollars would be saved?
Vance, can you respond to that?
Commissioner Hayes, no, I don't have a dollar amount of what that might be. As we reiterated, I think our view is it can be separated, and should be separated, but you always have that opportunity as a commission to roll it into the scope with a construction manager. But we are handling it as a separate project as you suggested.
It appears that in your cost detail, the fees for each half is, are relatively close to being the same. I didn't do the math, but within a few thousand dollars of being 50% going to the public improvements plan and 50% going to the parking lot redesign. So I just, I don't think I can support it the way it's written. I think they need to be segregated and dealt with individually.
Vance, on this, being we're looking at part of this being related to ADA funding, so that money's going to come out of a different pot, so to speak. And my question will be then, are we going to be able to, would there be cost savings on this? I know you don't have a figure down to indicate that, but would there be some type of cost savings that you could estimate or maybe get that information to us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we certainly can work with McCowen Gordon, the construction manager, to see if they can provide their view on how it might be handled and the costing. If your, if your question is related to the other paving work that we're doing on or near this area, is that your question?
Yes.
Yes, and I, so if that is your question, I would go back to McCowen Gordon and ask if there is any savings. The parking lot north certainly is separated. As Matt Murphy, our civil engineer, mentioned, there's some coordination, but they certainly can be completely separate projects, bid and handled separately as well. But we can check with McCowen Gordon, see if they can suggest that there might be savings or not.
All right, and then my second question would be, on the alley south of the 1916 City Hall, that drive is, is that broken up in places? Is that, is that, is that concrete or is that asphalt back there?
I think it's asphalt.
Matt, do you want to jump in?
It is.
I believe it's, I believe it's a hybrid, it's a little bit of both there. There is some concrete there, but I think there's also, it's mostly asphalt, but there's some concrete section.
Kind of depends which patch you look at.
It's in bad shape.
Correct.
Okay, so then my next question would be, if we're going to repair or rebuild that, are we looking at asphalt or are we looking at making that concrete?
Ideally, my recommendation to you would be concrete if the, if the cost of, if the cost of the asphalt versus concrete are similar, which in many times recently we've seen that is actually the case. It also could depend on the time of year that it was, that it would be, that it would be constructed. Obviously, asphalt plants shut down a little earlier as it come into fall/winter months. And with milder temperatures, concrete work can continue throughout the winter and into early spring, so it can also be a timing issue. But depending on if it was, if it was bid out as a separate small project, sometimes doing that, if the scope was simply just that section of alley work, concrete might be more affordable because there's less mobilization costs associated with that versus asphalt. But in terms of long-term durability and kind of getting actually the best cost for the city's dollar, a concrete replacement would be ideal.
All right, thank you.
With that, alley, if you've got concrete parking, it would almost be easier to just do it all in concrete and pour it out at the same time or tie the two together to get asphalt trucks lay down rollers in there. Pretty tight space, but really it's kind of early to predict some of the decisions. On the other parking lot, to actually see what's going to work best for closing Myrtle Street and elevations, you really need the site plan extended up towards Laurel Street, don't you, before you make any projections of cost?
In my opinion, that would be correct, yes, sir.
When you're dealing with ADA, you've got the sidewalk, the street crossing, gray to the parking spots, both going to the business district and back to City Hall, that there could be elevation changes that one, Myrtle Street ties into the lot too. So some of the questions we're asking probably be better after we get the topo to you.
Yes, because there is a gray transition there and we'll want to make sure we position those ADA stalls most conveniently to serve the City Hall as well as the central business district there along the street.
All right, Vance, so to make sure that we clarify this, this particular project, in your opinion, or you've stated that this will be handled as a separate project, and the only advantage is if this would be combined with the other projects that we have going on considering, considering the 1916 City Hall, would be if there was some anticipation of cost savings, and that we don't actually know at this time. So in order to proceed, we're going to look at this as a separate project unless you can come back with information that shows that if we choose to do otherwise and benefit of cost savings, we can go forward and move in that direction. But right now, you're just looking for approval to, for what you've submitted for us tonight.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. We are looking for approval to begin the design process and not requesting bidding at this time, so that can be handled at a later date.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, do you have any other additional questions for Vance or Matt?
I have none.
I have none.
All right, then, I entertain a motion on this.
I move to approve additional civil engineering at $55,200 with reimbursable costs and the city providing topographical survey and title work.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, two to one.
While we have Vance on the phone, we have the proposed schedule that, Vance, can you go over the schedule, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, what we have in front of you is updated design and bidding schedule for the two projects that we're currently working on. The fire and EMS is package one, the 1916 City Hall is package two. McCowen Gordon, the construction manager on the project, we've been working with them, and they are recommending that we move the fire and EMS project as quickly as possible knowing that the current market is such that there could be a delay in the, in actually receiving the pre-engineered metal building. And that if it can be bid separately and faster than City Hall, that is a recommendation. So we worked with them on developing dates, dates for when we would achieve certain percentage of completion for construction documents, when we would come back to the city commission, and then also we would come back at the appropriate time for the anticipated bid date for the fire and EMS, package one, on December 9. We don't need that approval today, this is just an update of the schedule. And then, of course, after the bids, the construction manager needs time to make sure that they've received complete bids, that all the information is there, and at that time they would prepare the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, and present that to the city commission on December 23. And that schedule is separate and different from City Hall. With the changes that we've made last time we got together, we now are working at changing the HVAC, the heating, air conditioning, ventilation system for City Hall to a more simple system. And so that is part of the rework that we're doing. And it's, excuse me, design and construction document phase is much, is slower and moving behind the fire and EMS. The anticipation is that we would have the documents done, 100% bid documents done and ready to be issued at the end of January so that in mid-February, that project could be bid and that McCowen Gordon would then present to the city commission the GMP on March 10. So they are looking at it and trying to handle the schedule in what works well with the market, as well as trying to make sure that we can include the type of information that needs to be included in the different packages.
Vance, on that phase two, the package number one, the Independence Fire EMS, that's a narrow timeline as far as bid date and submission to city management and then presentation to city council. You're looking at submission to the city on December 17 and then presentation to the city council on the 23rd.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. And what McCowen Gordon is suggesting is obviously after the bid on December 9, they need a couple of weeks to pull the numbers together. Their preference is that then they submit that to city management staff, work through any questions that they may have, and then present shortly thereafter to the commission. And they don't anticipate that they need much time between talking with city staff and presenting it to the commission.
All right. Kelly, does that give this, does that give this, give us time, the timeframe that's indicated here on this package that we've just gone over?
The question we have, and we sent to them earlier, and I think I've ordered a copy to you, is on the 60% construction documents on the fire and EMS on the 18th and then 100% bid documents issued the next day on the 19th. And Vance, I don't know if you want to clarify that?
Sure, yeah. What, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the intent is when we provide the 60% documents to McCowen Gordon on October 28, they then need time to develop the budget in order to be ready to present that budget on November 18. But from the architectural and engineering side, we would continue moving forward with the documents between 60 and 100. So we would not stop working and waiting for the review of the commission, we would continue to complete that construction document package.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, I'm going to open this up to you, both of you. Any questions for Vance?
I have none.
No, I'm, I'm good with the schedule.
All right, then, with that, Vance and Matt, thank you. I entertain a motion on this.
There's no motion. There's no motion necessary.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, thank you. Moving along here. All right, does that, that answer your questions that you had for us? All right, does that answer your questions that you had for us, Vance?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. We just wanted to provide an update on the schedule to keep the commission, you and the commission informed of the progress. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vance.
This is the, I didn't look at this document earlier, so it was, it was new to me. I got it, I just didn't open it up, so. Sorry for the confusion on this. All right. Moving along here, item B, consider authorizing award of the Kitty Land Sidewalk Construction Project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Scott Patton. For those of you that I haven't met yet, I'm the director of Ralph Mitchell Zoo in Riverside Park. We're here to consider authorizing the award of Kitty Land Sidewalk Construction Project to J. Graham Construction. They put in a bid, a low bid, of two-hundred thirty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. If you look at the slides on the projector, they include photos of some pieces of play equipment that will need to be relocated or removed, and have sidewalks port to them for ADA access. They include relocation of a slide, a sidewalk poured to the castle, repositioning of the family of gorillas, removal of two jungle gyms. Any questions?
There was quite a bit of difference between this bid from J. Graham and the other bid that I had a chance to look at. And it was significant, actually.
Yes, it was.
Hundred and, what, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, roughly, speaking?
The other bid was for three-hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred. So it was a significant difference.
The engineer's estimate, I had sent Kelly a request for that, and I think our budget was two-hundred fifty-nine thousand six hundred eighty dollars, so comparing where it bid to what was projected, it is within an acceptable range, not extremely low. It's always hard to tell with just two bids, the consistency of why one is that much higher than the other. But basing Graham is a contractor that did the extension of Peter Pan ADA work, so they've got a history of performance.
Yeah, he's also at the airport, isn't he, John? He's doing our airport work, too.
Okay.
So we're familiar with their work, and they do good work, so, and it falls within the the dollar amount that was projected for the project, so Commissioner Hayes, do you have some questions or input for this?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
All right. If that's it, then, Scott, thank you for this part of it. So I entertain a motion on this.
I move to authorize award of the Kitty Land Sidewalk Project to J. Graham Construction at a price of two-hundred thirty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried, thank you. Moving along, item C, consider authorizing award of the Kitty Land Restroom Construction Project. Scott again.
So currently, the only restroom at Ralph Mitchell Zoo is six, is over six-hundred and twenty feet from Kitty Land. It is on the outside of the gate, so anyone using Kitty Land has to walk completely through the zoo to use it. An architect has been engaged, and the project was bid on October fourteenth. The low bidder was Decker Construction with a bid of one-hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars. The next closest bid was one-hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
All right, Scott, on that, I had initially forgotten what we projected the estimated the project cost would be for this, and I've got an email that I read, and it said they had talked about originally a cost of sixty thousand dollars, but that was just an estimate. But then there was also talk that the project could actually come closer to a hundred thousand dollars. And I think at that time, I wondered, that seems to be an awful nice bathroom for a hundred thousand dollars. Seems to be pretty pretty, pretty good price for a bathroom facility, so I was just a little bit surprised how this came in at over a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Commissioners, do you have questions for Scott?
The same, my question was the same, and you weren't here when the sixty thousand dollar estimate was given. What changed from that time till we got the drawings? Did we make the bathroom bigger? Did we change material? Did, who did the original construction estimate? Just, you know, I think we're looking at fifty-eight thousand, almost fifty-nine thousand dollars difference. We need to see justification. Is it just this was a plan that was budgeted and estimated at sixty thousand? Or were there significant modifications made from that point to now?
I believe, like you said, I wasn't here when that initial estimate was made. I believe that was just a ballpark figure from the previous director. I don't believe that she'd spoken to any engineers or anything as far as that goes. Cost of materials are extremely high. In our current economic climate, everything's extremely expensive. So that's the only real answer I have for that question.
I think we can add to that, Commissioner, that that was just a bathroom, but working with the Lions Club and commission and staff, you know, we added on the storage area, the ability to store. I think we have the ability to clean in that room. We made sure it was a year-round facility. So heating, the underground electricity supplying power for lighting around there. So the project did grow a little from that initial, just a bathroom, to a facility that services the area and provides the sous staff and our great partners, the Lions Club, the ability to work in that area. So I think that is where some of your growth came in that amount.
And also, they made it so it would aesthetically fit into the area, instead of just doing something that would, you know, stick out like a sore thumb.
Just a simple design.
So, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a point that you brought, David, explaining the transition from just a bathroom to other features to justify the cost. I think the architect was, you know, his estimate was a little difficult to read. He was pretty hooked on square foot price, which doesn't mean a thing, and how much it actually costs is the bottom line. I think he was at like one oh one, one oh one nine sixty-six, so, you know, there were just sixteen thousand. That can be some material cost or some of the gingerbread cost from there, but I want to make sure that we weren't looking at sixty thousand with the same concept that we got for a hundred and eighteen, just to make sure we're, we're understanding what is going to do.
And I think what we did, working with our partners, is what proved some of the cost, to make it work in that area.
Yeah, I understand when you look at the distance, like you brought out, Scott, from the other part, that you need that storage, you need cleaning supplies, you know, to make it serviceable and make better use of your time in the area, too. So I think the plan is justifiable. It wasn't extreme when I saw it. I think it was really what was necessary for that area, so. There was a deduct of four thousand two hundred dollars for metal roofing, and I asked for clarification on that, and it's just a stamped shingle. It's not a pre-standing metal roof. I'd be a little cautious in some of the angles when you start cutting a stamped product, how it finishes out and secured to keep it watertight. I think the composition shingles is better for this type of building. That, my main question was a difference of progression from sixty to one eighteen.
One of the disadvantages of having a small square footage structure is that you have fewer square foot to spread and average the cost out over, but some of the development costs are almost on par for a structure like this, as if you were building a two-thousand-square-foot house. So they can't be avoided. They're part of building a good foundation and making it durable and making it low maintenance, and all of those things that went into making this a aesthetically pleasing, low cost to maintain, highly functional addition to the Kitty Land area. I'm pleased with what I see, and I'm I'm okay with the price.
Okay. I have Andy Taylor that would like to come up and address this issue. Andy, how are you this evening?
Just fine. I'll be very brief. I'm Andy Taylor. I'm with the Independence Lions Club, and just want to let you know that this project, and we are so appreciative of the city having the foresight to invest for two major projects, the bathroom and the sidewalks, that's three-hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I don't see other cities spending on their parks right now, so we're doing a very big thing. It's a much bigger project when you tie in the Lions Club's aspect of what we're doing. And I just want to briefly touch upon what we're doing, so you'll be aware of it. But the Lions Club has received some money the past year through some memorial funds. It's not a lot of money. It's a lot of money to us and the Lions Club, but compared to this, it's just a drop in the bucket. But we have right now about eight thousand dollars that we will be using to purchase some vintage street lamp lights that'll go in Kitty Land to help with the illumination and safety and security. And I'm already in contact with a firm in Texas that specializes in this type of thing, and we'll be probably ordering those here in the near future. And I think your construction documents indicate that the contractor will be putting in the infrastructure, the club will be putting in the lights and maintaining them. Plus, we're also doing a project now where we are adopting out all of the structures to organizations. When I say structures, I'm talking about the actual playground structures out there, the pumpkin, the shoe, the lions and the bears. And the forty-some odd structures that are out there, they've all been adopted out. About a third of them have been painted already by these groups. And the goal is to get the rest of them painted coinciding with this project, so that by the start of the next park season, with the addition of the sidewalks and the bathroom and all the structures painted, you'll be seeing a nice, basically, a brand-new-looking Kitty Land, and we're very, very excited about that. So just want to let you know what we're doing from our aspect of it. We do have a pledge of ten thousand dollars from an individual, and that's just a pledge. There's no money in hand yet. But this person has promised that the money will be in hand once she sees the city put shovels to the ground at Kitty Land. Those were this person's exact words. So, not pressuring you, but this is one of those projects where it breeds more success, I think. So once we see the city investing, you'll see private money coming in, you'll see partnerships with the Lions Club as well, so it's a very good thing. Thank you.
All right, Andy, thank you very much for the input and the information. And thank you for what the Lions Club do to maintain Kitty Land and the park, and for all those that have stepped forward and taken on the projects of adopting and taking care of the maintenance of the different structures out there in the Kitty Land area, so. Speaks highly of the community, so, thank you. With that, if there are no further questions, entertain a motion on this.
I move to authorize award of the Kitty Land Restroom Project to Decker Construction at a price of eight, one hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Item D, consider adopting an ordinance related to maintaining the quality of city streets after utility excavations by third parties. John, how are you this evening?
Wonderful, thank you. This is actually not a, pardon me. This is actually not a new item. We've kind of discussed this one before. One of the things I've noticed over the last year is that we do have third parties excavating in the streets, and I want to make sure that we control what they do when they come back through and backfill, as well as repave the streets, so that we're getting at least what we had before, if not better. And what we've done is created an ordinance that gives us the control at the permit stage to say, okay, how are you going to backfill this? What size is this going to be? What materials are you going to use? And in order, and control that in order to allow us to maintain the quality of our streets. So that's a real short version.
If I understand right, that information needs to be provided to the city before the project actually starts, is that correct?
Absolutely. Well supplied to and approved. In general, we're not going to anticipate that we're going to ask a contractor to do anything that the city isn't going to do itself. So, I mean, you know, we're planning on, well, talking the talk and walking the walk in this particular case. We want, you know, from whoever is tearing into the streets to replace them with a quality street, so we don't see that degradation.
Okay. And then the, then there'll be a walkthrough on that when that's completed to make sure that the contractor did bring that street up to that minimum requirement at least, if not?
Yes, yes, and that's, and, you know, we already have a mechanism to do that through the building permit process and the building inspector, so. And in most cases, they will be looking at those connections and locations as part of their normal work duties anyway, so.
Okay, has that been an issue in the past?
I have seen areas where it has been an issue. There have been areas where there have been excavations and excavations into, for instance, a paved area that was left as a gravelled area. And this makes it exceedingly clear, and it makes the responsibilities for the contractors who do that work, the contractors and the owners of third-party utilities exceedingly clear.
All right. So some of the ones that I, in walking throughout the city, that I see, some of those could be from a third-party contractor?
Yes.
And they've just backfilled with gravel?
Yes.
And that's how they've remained, so that's not necessarily the city doing that, it's, could be a third-party contractor?
Yes, and now, we are, we probably have about, I want to say between twelve and seventeen excavations where we need to go back through and do some repaving work ourself.
Right.
And that'll be getting pricing on that as soon as I get some information from our water and sewer folks, because they're behind. They're low on manpower, so we'll be looking at getting some prices on that work so that we can get those filled. But there are also cases where third-party utilities have done that work.
Okay. So we will all be on the same page of making, if we do the cut, we'll make that repair and bring that up to standards?
Yes.
Regardless whether you're a contractor, third-party, or city?
Absolutely.
Great, great to hear that. Gentlemen, any questions?
John, this work is already permitted work. It's already, they already have to have a permit in advance of making these excavations, do they not?
Yes. In fact, this ordinance clarifies that they have to get a permit prior to doing this work. We did run into a situation more than once on the recent fiber optic borings where, you know, for instance, a drill bit got stuck, and they just started tearing into the street. Well, pretty soon I showed up and I said, no, you can't do that, and but this gives us absolute clarity to say, you are violating the ordinance. You need to tell us what you're doing, how you're going to do it, and how you're going to backfill it. You need to tell us what you're doing, how you're going to do it and how you're going to backfill it before you start tearing into our streets.
I'm just thinking about the process, are the cycle time associated with that in terms of someone who permitted to bore and then they realize that an excavation is going to be necessary? Is there, should the permitting process just predict that and get the permit? Scope of the permit expanded to include excavation and, and reference this ordinance?
Uh, that, that would be a possibility, especially if they anticipate having to do that sort of emergent. That, that should be kind of a front end question. If you anticipate any emergency excavation. But I'll note that I got a call from David within five minutes of them digging into the street and I was there within ten and they were talking with our building inspector within fifteen, so. And I might say that maybe my expectations fairly clear at about minute seven, so.
Well, as.
And it turned out pretty well, actually.
Well, good. And as third party activity within our town expands and increases, should, you know, these types of technologies or similar technologies like fiber optics and, and, you know, other technologies that might emerge? Uh, we need to be ready to modify our ordinances to incorporate language that would cover the city in that case. So I think it's just timely that we get this ordinance in place.
And, and again, for, when you look at, from, from my standpoint, this sets clear expectations within the ordinance and provides clear authority for city personnel to protect our streets. And, and that's, that's one of the things I'm, I really like about it.
Indeed. Thanks, John.
Do the utilities need to secure a permit to work in the right of way before they begin installation?
Yes.
Okay. So this kind of falls in just in line?
Yes. Yeah, so, so a common, you know, here's an example. Even our plumbing contractors would need to secure a permit in order to tap into our, our sewer lines. That would imply that they have the permit already. They're doing an excavation within our alleys. This would apply for the alleys as well in protecting the pavement within those areas.
Before the, like you mentioned, the fiber optics where they're not tying into any city utilities, but for them to run their fiber optics in the right of way, are they required to get a, a right of access to the right of way to do their installation? Or can they just begin doing the work?
Uh, we had permits for all of that work, so.
Yeah, we have permits. Uh, part, some of the problem is some of the utilities kind of skip that and we, we don't have enough manpower to catch them. So Tyler and John's guys out on patrol are probably going to have to stop and remind a few people.
Yeah. So you can kind of put notice of this ordinance into their initial permit that if they have to cut pavement, they have to get another permit. I had some questions on the administrative fee. I understand what you're trying to recoup some cost that's incurred for you handling that. But with the twenty-five percent, if it's a small, uh, small patch that you've got to redo, you can lose some costs in that. You know, if it's a couple hundred dollars, you know, twenty-five percent, have you thought of maybe a base fee to cover the small ones of minimum of a hundred dollars? Or what would actually cover your, your cost?
Actually, I, I think that we would be able to, in general, we'd be able to put some sort of estimated cost against all of that.
And just actually your, your spreadsheet of man hours, material, equipment, cost to redo their work?
Yeah, you know, an, an hour building inspector, the cost of the contractor, an hour of my time. Uh, we could, you know, we could impute those costs directly into it.
So if it, if they fail to do it, we're still recouping cost to the city by assessing them the charge? And your two hour, or excuse me, twenty-four month guarantee period, you're kind of going beyond the typical one year. The purpose is that just to allow settlement to occur, give more time to prove their, their work?
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to have minimum details, minimum standards for patch material or size rock for backfill developed along with this?
Yeah, yes. We will develop a, a sheet that Tyler could hand directly to the contractor that will cover most typical cases.
Okay.
And we'll have some minimum sizes as well as minimum materials used and as well as, you know, compactive effort. I mean, if they have a, if they have a relatively small hole, well, they're not going to be able to compact, so that, that's a good argument for flowable fill or some other, some other, if they could demonstrate, you know, some other way to do it. But, but yes, we will be giving them some guidelines.
So currently, if their patch work fails or is substandard, the cost to correct it falls upon the city with no repercussions, no avenue for us to collect our expenses?
Yes. And it, and, and essentially at that point, it just goes on to the list of things that we have to do.
Yeah. This is a good, good idea. It's, I think going to improve our streets and our alleys quite a bit when you start giving direction and, and performance and monitor their work too. Great job. I don't have any further questions on it?
All right. With that, I entertain a motion on this.
I move to adopt an or, an ordinance amending City Code Section ninety-four dash one six six and ninety-four dash one six eight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along. Item E, consider adopting a resolution setting the date of December twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at five thirty P M. for a public hearing to consider condemnation of three seventeen South Second Street as dangerous and unsafe. David?
Mayor, this house was involved in a structure fire. Uh, the fire did extensive damage into the attic, venting out to the north, east and south sides of the residents in the attic. Uh, the own, owners of the house, uh, the house was uninsurable by insurance company, so they had no insurance, limited income. Uh, so they, at that time, did not know if they would have the means to fix it or what they were going to do. Uh, we will be working with them over the next sixty days through this process when we comes to a public hearing to see what their plans are with this structure. But this time, we would ask, set the date for condemnation on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at five thirty P M. for consideration.
All right. Thank you, David. I had a chance to go by and look at the house and, yeah, it's pretty extensive. I'm glad no one was hurt and I hope they can come up with a plan that's best for them, that, that they can either find a way to rehabilitate the structure or realize that it's more than they're going to be able to handle and, and just let the process take place, so. So commissioners?
I have nothing.
I have no questions.
All right. David, thank you. So I entertain a motion on this, please.
I move, um, I move to adopt a resolution setting the date of December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one at five thirty P M. for a public hearing to consider condemnation of three seventeen South Second Street as dangerous and unsafe.
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Moving along. Item F, consider a request from Joshua Anderson to exceed the sewer cost share maximum for property located at four fifteen West Minister.
Hi, my name is Joshua Anderson. I, um, was in front of the committee in two thousand fifteen to get four fifteen off of the condemn list, which I worked hard to do that. I had some help from some other people. My income is limited. I was, in two thousand fifteen, I was, I got severely burnt for the Morel Roofing Company. So I basically got disability from that. So I make about seventy-one hundred dollars a year since that point on, every year. Seventy-one each year. So everything's going good with the property. I mean, I've, uh, y'all are going to, y'all were going to destroy the house, you know? I got it off of there. I did whatever you have to do to get that off of there. I've maintained, um, the property. Um, Nancy Klubine has given me a stack of nuisance fees that I paid on this house. I didn't buy it till two thousand fifteen. Well, I have thousands of dollars of nuisance fees that I paid from two thousand thirteen on that I can't get back. So I'm just letting you know that because, because I've maintained the property since two thousand fifteen and haven't had to have any nuisance fees, all those that I did pay, they said they can't even do anything about. Other people, when they bought property, they've erased those nuisance fees for them. So I have a stack of them just to show you about, you know, that I do care about the property. It's maintaining a family where I can have a family and, you know, raise a child. So this last issue is the first time I've ever had any problems at that house. From two thousand fifteen to now, two thousand twenty-one, we cannot flush the stool. We have fecal matter that's backing up into our tub. So Mr. Morel, he's let us bathe and wash up at his rental property. So I had to contract the city to see if they could help. It was like a four thousand dollar, um, expense that I was allotted. And then, so I contracted to the city licensed plumber, which is plum crazy. And he came out there, he's dug up. So right now, my backyard is exposed. He got a machine, he went up there and just dug it up and there's just pipes exposed, maybe so that he could secure this job is what, you know, just what I'm thinking. Cause I asked him, where are you at at this point? Into the four thousand dollars? He said zero. But then he looked under my house and seen that there was infestation of pipes that is twenty-eight hundred dollars that exceeds the four thousand. Well, in my household, coming up with four thousand dollars would be the same thing as coming up with twenty-eight, uh, hundred dollars. Like, it's just not going to happen. The money's not there. I'm still working hard. You know, more than anything, it's my daughter, you know? I have to always go over there and like sometimes I get frustrated with it that I can't even let my daughter use the bathroom like regular people. And I get frustrated with her because it might be a time, I don't want to go six blocks away to Mr. Morel's property. And it's not her fault that she has to use their bathroom. So that's what I'm here for, any help from that? If you want to see the bills that I paid on that, I would like for you guys to see that, just to see the work and that you're not invested in, just somebody that doesn't care or somebody that hasn't invested in the own property itself. So can, can you hand this to them so they can receive the taxes that I paid on that? That I can't even get back? Those were nuisance fees that were on that house from two thousand thirteen. I didn't purchase it till two thousand fifteen. Other people I know that bought houses and had nuisance fees on there, y'all wiped it off. You didn't even make them pay that. So if I could have some of that back, maybe I could use that to help pay the pipes.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, I, I have a question. Um, when you initially called the plumbing service out to do that, what was the, what was the estimate that he had given you?
The initial?
To make the repairs?
The initial, um, estimate was basically directed by the city for me to contact somebody that was a local plumber. And it was, there was not an initial one. He didn't even dug ring, wouldn't even look at it, okay? I called him first. He didn't even want to have nothing to do with it. So he finally came out there and the estimate total plus the four, so it's four thousand that was covered plus twenty-eight hundred to replumb mine, which was submitted to the city to. Those bills, the plumber submitted that, um, estimate to them of the additional cost to the four thousand, which I got one hundred percent, um, available, that four thousand to me because I only make seventy-one hundred dollars a year. So when you're flicking through there and you're seeing those receipts, they may look like little two, three hundred, four hundred, six hundred, uh, you know, little payments to you. That's a lot of money to me and my family paying on that. And then the main, to get it up in living standards. Cause you see it was on the condemn list to be condemned. So I basically saved a property. There's, it's in a great neighborhood over there. I think it's good for African Americans too to own homes. I mean, it's, that's a rarity, you see? And it's not really, uh, something that we're accustomed to around here in rural Kansas. So I would like to be a, a person of, of influence to maybe some of my people of what they can do in the future, well, maybe some help.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Well, um. May I ask a question? Is there any way for us to understand whether there is a rationalization? If anybody at the city has done a rationalization that sixty-eight hundred dollars is within the bounds of reason for the size of this project?
Without receiving additional bids, I don't know how we would do that, do you, David?
Uh, I can tell you just from building inspection, that range typically is in the, I've seen them as high as ten thousand, just depending on the job. I mean, it just shocks me the, the cost of replacing a sewer line, but.
So it's within the bounds of reason?
It is within the bounds and that is a fairly deep area back there, difficult area back in behind those houses. Uh, we do have a new sewer line that is running in that alley. But as you guys know, we're having issues there that we're working on.
Is this work tying into the new sewer line?
No. It's a, he's actually in the next block, David.
Oh, is it in the, uh, that's?
It's not, and he's on the other side of the street.
Oh, okay. So I'm sorry.
Never mind my question.
Yeah.
No, it's not part of that one.
So it's, but it would be within reason.
So we are getting ready to do some other major sewer projects, one in, um, a block away from this where we're going to connect several, um, properties to the sewer main, um, that work on a private line that we've been dealing with, that we've spoke about before. Then we have this first and Birch, um, area. Is that the, the right address? Um, where we're working on, they're on a private line and we're going to connect several of those. And a lot of those individuals are also going to be low income and we're concerned that they're also going to, could be over that four thousand. And we need to be consistent with, with everyone. So we have an alternative, um, potential solution that, um, if we, if the property owner's willing to sign an agreement where the, the ci, city would help fund that additional cost, but they would pay that additional cost back over ten years on the property tax with four percent interest. If we grant one, when we have all the others asked, we need to be consistent. And so we're concerned about that. But that would provide an alternative to fund the project, to get a sewer back operational and allowing to pay it out over time rather than having to come up with the money all at once.
Are any of the other properties that you're talking about there currently, uh, without sewer service?
Touch and go. It's in that area.
Yeah. We, we've had a lot of issues in the two other locations and they're currently working on getting easements to move that project forward on the. working on getting easements to move that project forward on the first and Birch area. And John's gonna report on that when he does his public works report. Um, but, yeah, it's, it's, they've had to do some temporary fixes and things like that. And some of the property owners on Westminster, we have been advised, though we haven't seen it, that they're having backups and things like that. But, um, anyway, so, that project is moving forward. As I said, John can give you an update on that when he does his public works report.
So, Kelly, this involves the three hundred block of Westminster and?
No, not this gentleman's property.
He's on the four hundred block.
He's, he's in the next block on the other side of the street. He is not connected to that particular sewer line.
Okay.
This is just another incident of somebody that needed to replace their sewer.
Okay.
Which we have, um, you know, we've had several, we've given a lot of grants. We haven't had any asks for additional funds over that for quite some time. I put a couple of examples, but that were, they were back before we increased the city's match to four thousand dollars for the low income, which was done last year. It used to be the maximum was two thousand dollars. Um, so, that has been doubled in the last year. So, um, these other ones were prior to that being modified.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd ask that you look at four fifteen Westminster as isolated as, as my own, not in conjunction with whatever else it's got going on. I understand that, you know, you gotta be fair to everybody. I do understand that. But, I think I'm well, well within, uh, the poverty range of being able to be helped by this. Um, I just can't come up with twenty-eight hundred dollars. If I came up with twenty-eight hundred dollars, I could do it. I could borrow some money. I've borrowed so much money from this man. This man has helped me, uh, I don't have nowhere else to get the money or I would just pay it and I wouldn't be in your face here today.
What the city manager was saying is that...
I understood what she was saying.
If she...
But I don't, I, I kinda want you to look at this at, as a solitary issue and don't conjure it with anything else. Because when I came to get it off of the condemned list, it was a solitary issue there. And I, I handled that. And then I'm just kinda still back here at the same issue at your mercy.
Well, it does... It's hard to look at it as a solitary issue because we've got the same issue with other people in the same financial situation. And what we were hoping to be able to do is where the, the city would go ahead and pay the full amount, but then on your taxes...
I can't afford that. My family can't afford any more hardship behind us. That's what I'm trying to tell you. I, I'm not gonna sit here and write, sign a contract for me to owe some more money and I'm begging today.
Josh, let him, let him finish. Um, it comes out to about twenty-five dollars a month.
Can't afford it. At, I make seventy-one hundred dollars a year. One hundred percent disabled from being tragically burnt for the Morel Roofing Company. Now, he's letting me use the bathroom, wash up. I mean, I could be in some trouble because I can't, I'm, I can't provo- provide my daughter right now a place to, one and two.
Are there other programs that you know of, Kelly, that...
This is all that the city has. Like I said, they doubled the amount last year for the low income. And we anticipate, we're gonna have several that are also gonna qualify in these other neighborhoods.
Would, um, would there be some type of funding set up through, um, maybe the Community Access Center or through other, I know they help, some of them help pay utility bills, things like that?
I, I wouldn't know that. I mean, certainly could inquire to see if they could assist him with that.
Was there any money in the American Rescue Plan that the county had?
I, again, that's something we would have to ask the county. Those, those funds are restricted for certain things, but I don't know if this would fit that or not. Ashley's working on that for them, uh, with Yurkies. She would probably be the one that would, would know if it was qualified.
Would there be anything, um, trying to think, um, another funding source that, um, could address that? I just lost my train of thought on that.
I'm about real close from abandonment from that house just because I don't wanna get in trouble from the DCF because I can't allow my daughter a place to bathe and, and use the bathroom. Then here I am again on Mr. Morel saying, hey, can I stay at your house over there? And here I'm leeching off this man again. He doesn't owe me anything. Neither do you, neither do you. But it says on the paper, four thousand dollars. And if it goes over that, then you appeal to the commission. Here I am.
Is...
May I interject then that, uh, Mr. Anderson is, is here and he is following the, uh, the appeal process? And, uh, it is really not Mr. Anderson's fault or problem that we have some other pending stuff that we have not completed at this point, nor have we an idea of when that will be completed. So, uh, acting on the merits of his request alone, can we not take some action, uh, that would be, uh, final and definitive at this meeting?
If you're asking me, of course, you've got the, uh, motions that are possible motions in your RCA and then the alternative, uh, motion that we provided you as well.
You know, he's not, and Mr. Anderson's not in arrears with his, uh, tax. He's up to date with his tax payment.
I wouldn't know that unless we contacted the county and asked.
I owe two thousand seventeen, which would be two thousand, or two hundred and thirteen dollars before being put on that list that they're gonna sell your house. So, I'll have to come up with two hundred and thirteen dollars before June, which I can do that. I'm, I'm adamant on that.
So, you know that you have two hundred and thirteen dollars worth of due taxes on your house right now?
I get... There's a thing called homestead. And I get that every year and that helps me pay my taxes because I make seventy-one hundred dollars a year. So, here we are back then. So, homestead pays every year. They pay that, they pay that for me every year. Okay, so, basically to stay off of the sheriff sale, whatever goes on in this town, they threaten you to sell your house or something with the sheriffs, to not go on that list, I'll have to pay two hundred and thirteen dollars. And it's rising right now, a little, little bit of money. So, maybe two hundred and thirty dollars is what I would have to come up with before June. And I'm adamant I can do that. As far as the status of my taxes over there at that house there, besides what I just showed you of paid stuff. So, I'm doing the best I can there.
Josh, was it that for twenty-seventeen taxes you said?
Yeah, I'll...
Do you owe twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen?
Yeah, all, all up to that because all of my money I just showed you went to a rigmarole that I can't get back, that were basically wiped off from other people that bought property with nuisance fees on it. Do, do you understand? Okay.
I think, you know, we've got the problem that, well, we got a lot of problems.
Right, so, it said four thousand dollars is what I was allotted due to my poorness. And then, if anything exceeded that, appeal to the commission and here I am.
Yeah. Then, you know, I think when we have an appeal, that sometimes responding immediately is not appropriate. We hear what you're saying, but we need time to consider the full ramifications.
We don't have time. We, we have to use the bathroom every day, sir, just like you.
Well, we can either consider it...
This is two and a half months. It's been two and a half months, sir.
Josh, don't interrupt him, let him finish.
We can either consider it tonight and come back and, and make a decision if there's other options.
But then that, then that's affecting my disability.
But see...
That's gonna affect my disability from that time for you to decide until now.
But like you said, you've had two months...
Yeah.
That you've been dealing with it.
Yes.
But we got this tonight.
Right.
And there's some options.
He got it two months ago. He got it two and a half months ago, the city. This man knew this two and a half months ago and y'all didn't know it. There's a break somewhere then. He knew. This man knew. He cared.
Mr. Anderson, um... Roger, would you, um, get contact information for Mr. Anderson? I'd like to visit with him, uh, after this meeting, if, if he would be available.
Yeah, I will, sir. But what I'm saying, it seems like you're coming personal now, like you care and you wanna, wanna help personal. This is a commission deal because it said on the paper, four thousand dollars is what you're covering and anything over that, appeal to the commission. So, I'm here. I don't want you to personally have to do nothing. I want the commission to come with the, the justice of all of this, the balance. There's a balance and, and that's where people like you come into play.
We, we understand, but, but this, this also opens up to other people that are gonna have similar issues.
That's not my concern, sir. I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to sound inconsiderate, but my concern is four fifteen Westminster and that was my concern when I appealed to this commission to get it off the condemned list.
I understand that, sir, but that also is taxpayer money that we are gonna have to open the door to fund other people that have similar situations where it's gonna exceed the four thousand dollar amount.
So, then he could have just...
So...
He could have just given you my written, what I wrote about this and I didn't have to be here today then, right? I wrote all of this out first to even get to come here to speak. So, he literally has all, all of what I feel right now on a piece of paper. What I'm telling you is, personally, with my daughter and me and, and Mr. Morel, it could have been a waste of time for us here today.
No, it's not a waste of time.
Cause I'm still waiting, you know? But by the time y'all figure out maybe some plan or something for me or some, uh, action plan on this, my disability's deteriorating behind this more and more, that basically at this point, the commission has a party in today. I'm a disabled man. I'm not like you. I'm one hundred percent disabled. This stuff is affecting my well-being.
We understand that, um...
Fecal matter.
I understand that, sir. And I know you've lived with this for, for several months now. Um, commissioners, do you think that we can bring this back in two weeks and have an answer for him?
But listen, if I have to come back again, it's embarrassing to me. All of this is emotional. It brings out like...
No, you...
Like, I really don't wanna do this again.
But if we can put a solution together with you that does not require us authorizing the twenty-eight doll- twenty-eight hundred dollars, if there's a way that we can get that done, we can't do it right now.
Right.
But you give us time.
I do not want it to be...
Wait a minute.
You know, please, please.
I'll either vote, wait a minute.
Sir, let us finish.
Wait a minute.
Let him finish, please.
I've listened to you and now I'm asking for the same respect from you.
Yes, sir.
You're pushing it. We're trying to find a solution for you. And if we can find that solution...
I have a disability, sir.
Would you wait a minute?
I have a disability.
I understand that.
Part of my disability is oppositional defiant disorder and clicking into it now with you.
Sir, sir, please.
I've never had a problem with you.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to stop.
Now, I gotta leave.
Stop, please.
Would you rather me just leave now, guys?
No, just listen.
I've stated my case.
Sir, stop. We just want you to listen.
I have some issues.
We understand that. You've made, we, you've made us well aware of that. We just want you to stop and let Commissioner Keflis finish. We will help you, but as far as your conversation, it is ended. Let Mr. Keflis finish, please.
I'll just sit and listen.
All right, thank you, sir.
You know, the four thousand dollars we've committed to, and I think there's means to come up with the twenty-eight hundred that can happen without coming back to the commission. And, uh, Kelly has contact sources to get ahold of Mr. Anderson. I think we search those avenues the next day or so and see what comes up and is available for him. And then, and then let you know and it won't have to come back to the commission.
Thank you.
Yep.
Very much. Can I say one more thing? One more thing, sir? In the future, if the city knows despicable issues like this, could you relay it to the top or change before so it doesn't take three months for them to be heard about something that's important, at least to them and their families?
Sir, I just pulled up your application and you submitted it on September twenty-first for the, the program and the city notified you on October fourth that you were qualified for the four thousand dollars.
So, how, how much?
And then the estimate that we received was dated October fourteenth and your request to, uh, for the additional funds was, uh, dated October twenty-first.
I guess the fecal matter...
So, that is not three months.
I guess the fecal matter is just...
So, I, I understand that, but I just wanna clarify that...
I don't know.
That staff has been working on this and so I just wanted to make sure that the commission was aware of that.
Seems like ten months, guys.
Please.
We'll see what we can do.
And we will get back, we will get back with you, see what we can find and work out and come to some type of solution for this. So, I appreciate your input. We understand your position, but, but we also, we also have a duty here, no.
Mr. Mayor?
I think we're, I think we're...
Mr. Mayor?
I just need my papers back that shows what I've paid in this community. That's all I want.
I'll take it back.
All right.
Thanks so much, guys.
All right, thank you.
What is the, what is the appropriate motion then for, uh, the conclusion of this matter this evening? Are we...
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Can't wait, table?
Yeah.
With table, I think it'd just be the...
Now, are you wanting to set like a special meeting or something? I mean, how do you...
Let's see what can be put together and then we, we can be contacted if we need a special meeting, but, you know, I think there's, there's, there's gotta be ways within the community that, uh, in, in a case of need like this, that there is additional funding that, uh, would be available for him. You know, I think where we have to look at, at the four thousand dollars and in, in other cases, we've got to be, be consistent. And if they're not able to sign the agreement to go on to the property tax, then surely there are other sources that they could appeal to. It sounds to me like Mr. Anderson's not aware of those resources, but I know that there's been other grants given for individual house repair, helping people out with remodelings and what have you that surely they could step forward once they know his, his need. The problem is it hasn't been out there. He hasn't had the resource to contact that. So, I think that, you know, with, with our ability, if somebody could make a call to Community Access Center, there's another grant program that's helped with residential homes, so...
All right, and then, uh, if... All right. And then if.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps a recess? How about we take five minutes?
Yep. Okay. I make a motion that we take five minutes?
Well, second the motion.
All in favor, say a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The meeting is back in session.
Mayor, where do we end on the last item? Do we officially table that?
We, it's my understanding that we still need a motion of some kind or tabling action.
We talked about looking into this a little further and then deciding what we could find out if there is help available on this project for him, that we can help him out to the extent that he can get his sewer line put in and have a livable place. That's kind of where we left it.
Then I make a motion that we table this item for further investigation.
All right. Do I have a second on this?
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Item G, moving along. Consider a recommendation from the park board to rename the Rock Kitchen to the Rock House and to rename the concession house to the Interurban Shelter. Yes, Scott?
So the issue with the Rock Kitchen and the concession houses, they cause a lot of confusion. The Rock Kitchen, people who rent it are often upset when they get in there and there's not a kitchen. So that's a source of frustration that we hear a lot about. The concession house is confusing because when people see it, they think that it's the snack shack at the zoo. And we actually had an EMS call where someone was in distress at the concession house and EMS responded to the snack shack. So that, you know, cost valuable time. So we put it to the park board and they voted to rename the Rock Kitchen to Rock House and the concession house to the Interurban Shelter. Interurban is after the Interurban Railway, which donated the land that the park is on.
Well, I can agree. When I was looking at renting the facilities, I was always confused as to which was the Rock Kitchen and which was the concession house. So I can understand the confusion on that. So it makes sense to me to clarify that.
And part of the reason they're needing to get these names is also on part of the wayfinding project so that we have the correct names on the signage too.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the names went back to establishment of the park, that concession stand was actually a concession stand for the park, which was before my time. If you look at some of the details of its construction and its location and the Rock Kitchen was possibly some sort of kitchen down there with the large picnic table, the concrete picnic table outside. But just because they were named that prior, doesn't mean that it's applicable today. And when we're causing confusion, particularly in the case of an emergency, concession house and concession building are too close to the same thing. And when people try and use that as an identification point and there's a health issue, that's something we need to address.
My presumption is that you'll follow this action up with appropriate signage within the park as well and maybe even on the structures.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. If there's no further questions, then I need a motion on this, please.
I move to accept the recommendation from the park board to rename the Rock Kitchen to the Rock House and to rename the concession house to the Interurban Shelter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item H, consider adopting a charter ordinance exempting the city from the provisions of KSA fourteen dash fifteen oh two, having to do with residency requirements for city employees.
Mayor and commissioners, at the league conference, we attended a training and it went through several different things. And one of the things that we became aware of is that this was in statute. None of us were aware of that. The city attorney wasn't aware of it. And even prior to me working here thirty some years ago, our residency requirement would not have complied with this. So in order to address it, we need a charter ordinance, which will then allow us to do home rule. It has to be published for, I believe, sixty one days. And then we would come back and adopt an ordinance that you gentlemen would adopt relating to residency as part of home rule.
All the charter ordinance does is allow you to exempt yourselves from the current statute, which we're in violation of, and come back later and adopt your own ordinance and craft it any way you want to craft it.
And it falls under home rule because it's not uniform for all cities, correct?
That's correct.
Makes sense to me.
Yep. Same here also. So if there's no further questions, entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a charter ordinance exempting the city from the provisions of KSA fourteen dash fifteen oh two, having to do with residency requirements for city employees.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Item five, reports Public Works Project. John, again.
Good evening again. As I did last time, I like to start at the end with the report. And I've got to talk about the airport apron. The concrete has been completed, South Airport Apron work. That was J. Graham Construction, which we awarded the sidewalks to tonight and they did exemplary work out there. No quality issues at all with adequate production. So just noting that. So we've got, that project will probably be on next week or next month as well because they haven't finished some of the marking. But it should be physically complete in the field in November and then rolling off the list in December. So good news there, finishing work up. Moving back a little bit through time, do anticipate an RCA on the water plant master plan. We will be looking to get a design contract amendment to incorporate those elements for the master plan that we're scheduled for 2022 and get those into design. I anticipate having that in November. We talked about the sidewalk and the restroom. Tenth and Main, I still do not have a start date from KDOT on that particular project. They've given a late start date into, I want to say March. So they could start as late as March. So we don't have a definitive date yet. One thing that we do know is we talked previously about water lines and replacement of water lines underneath new roads. That's one where in the initial design did not incorporate replacement of the water line. So Trans Systems has designed a water line replacement for, at this point, we're going to discuss with the low bidder a change order for that work and look at that work moving forward so that, you know, once we built our new road, that we don't have to touch it because of a water line.
Good.
Maple Street Cost Share, that's one of the, I guess, I'm gonna call it one of the stickier projects that we've got. Its bid came in substantially over. If you'll look, right now I'm showing that the approximate total project cost is in the three point seven million dollar range. That's roughly a million dollars more than we anticipated spending on that project. And so we're looking at ways we can lower that cost. The first thing that we, the engineering firm found was that there was a planned bore of stormwater pipe. And that bore was anticipated to cost two hundred thousand dollars. Well, there's already a stormwater pipe there. It's just slightly smaller than the one that they wanted to put in. And so will it be adequate for our purposes? They're doing the calculations, but potentially so. In that case, we'd be able to rip two hundred thousand dollars. We also know that the contractor that was the apparent low bidder was only dealing with, for instance, one concrete contractor. So the engineering firm has helped them find additional folks to provide bids. And they feel that there is, there is the potential for several hundred thousand dollars of cost cutting associated with that. And I will stress that KDOT is aware of our situation. This is a KDOT Cost Share Program. So they are aware of what we're doing and what we're trying to accomplish there. So it's our goal that hopefully by the next time we meet, we come up with a menu of potential cost-saving mechanisms in order to bring this project cost down and make this project go. So that one, giving you some foreshadowing, that's kind of a sticky one. CDBG, which is similar to the KDHE wastewater loan project, those, I believe, are both going to have just the same loan. Anticipate an RCA. I had written in September and I had written October and now I'm writing in November. We're anticipating the loan documents, but we're waiting on KDHE to provide those. What we have done, however, is the survey is complete, especially around First and Birch. We are waiting though from the surveyor for the property description. We anticipate having that fairly soon, but regardless, we do expect to have a full communication package as well as a list of affected properties to the commission by the next meeting. So we anticipate having, you know, what it is that we're going to talk to landowners about and which landowners that are affected. So that's, again, we anticipate having that ready for the early November meeting. So that's, again, we anticipate having that ready for the early November meeting. Enterprise Drive, we do have an additional set of drawings that have been completed. And we are anticipating requesting permission to bid in November, bidding in December and awarding not too long after that. And Sea Clip Grants, those projects would be bid probably, the earliest would be second quarter of 2022. The next phase would be assigning a design engineer. And I have requested Trans Systems provide a proposal associated with that. So, those are the big pieces. We did request permission previously from the commission. And we're granted permission to apply for the KDOT Cape Grants for the airports. And we did apply for those grants. The selection process is in December, so I imagine by the second meeting in December, we'll understand if we were successful or not. And that's a lot of things to say, so. Are there any questions?
What is the EPA plans for the water treatment that Trans Systems, is that separate from the PEC project?
Yes. What that is, is the EPA requires, as a provision, I want to say of the 2008 Clean Water Act, that we have a risk and resiliency plan in place. We did the study, I'm sorry, we did the questionnaire as required by June. And by December, we need to have the EPA plan in place. Previously, we had a plan in place due to KDHE requirements. And so what we'll be doing is we'll craft the EPA requirements under the currently existing KDHE plan. So we'll have one, one plan for both KDHE and EPA.
Okay, thank you.
The, would you give me a little background on the KDOT Cape Grant?
The Cape is, I shouldn't know the acronym. It's Kansas Airport Improvement Projects, I believe.
Okay.
And so what those grants are, are those grants are for improving Kansas's airports. And that's through KDOT. And we have, I believe, gotten those grants before. And we have applied this time for some pavement maintenance work as one grant. And as a separate grant, we applied for refurbishment for our terminal. So, we're looking at the potential for having both of those financed by KDOT. I think it's a 90-10 splint, so.
You read my mind. That was my next question.
And that is going off in memory. I don't.
Pretty much anything out the airport has been 90-10?
Yeah, generally. In actuality, what we're going to see, I believe, on the taxiway project, it's going to be much more favorable than 90-10. I think that entire project might cost us, you know, which is, some $900,000 might cost us, you know, $40,000 or less.
Okay, great. All right, any further questions for John?
I have none, John. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, I don't have any at this time on that.
You answered mine, John. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, moving along. City manager comments. Kelly?
I'd sent you guys an email previously about the MAP meeting coming up. It's on November 4th and it's at Cherryville. If you would like to go to that, just send me an email so I can get you registered. So I wanted to remind you about that. The next commission meeting is on the 10th, which is a Wednesday. That's due to Veterans Day on the 11th. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And then also, we have scheduled the awards luncheon for our employees for December 10th. And it would be over the lunch hour. And so I just wanted you to plug that in on your calendars, if you could. And then, other than that, they did have a fire this morning at Penn Manor. The Fire EMS did an excellent job. April did a great job allowing, they took people to Penn Terrace that were, had to be out of their apartments for several hours and they fed them and took care of them. And they did an excellent job with that as well. And so we just want to say we appreciate public safety in the housing department for everything that they did on that.
Have they been able to return to the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And everyone got out safe, as far as you know? There weren't any?
There was one rescue of the room that was on fire. They did rescue that person. That person was transported and is hospitalized at an outlying hospital.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, commissioners, any comments tonight?
I have none.
Yeah, I have a few. One of our items in the consent agenda dealt with use of the civic center without cost. It's been a few years back where we were doing some partnering and I brought up the need for a policy. The league was working on it and never did. Where we have requests, I still feel we need to have a policy of what we will and won't. And if the league isn't going to be able to have time to get us a policy, I think we need to develop our own just to be prepared that we don't get requests that would cause us issue, that we're pressed into a corner.
We do have a policy for use of this building. This actually is a state activity, which normally they are not charged anyway. But because it's after hours, they would be charged the labor fee. So basically, this would be waiving that labor fee because it is a public event.
Yeah, we still need a policy in writing of how we're going to handle that and other organizations. The league seemed to be in agreement, but they weren't able to dedicate the time. There's other communities that have a similar policy I think we need to look into.
Okay. If you have any examples of those, if you could forward them to me.
I did. I'll go back and look and see what I can find. And then, I'm sure there's others that have better access to those things than me. But I'll find what I had at the time. Last time I talked about the final appraisal value. It's been determined and the actual valuation set. There was a decrease in valuation of $68,577. So I'd like to have it presented if we're going to stay with the amount that we levy, the dollar amount, and then have to modify our mill levy or if we're going to cut the money out of the budget. So maybe at our next commission meeting, we could have that on the agenda. Polycarp program, a lot of people have been asking how that's going, what the status of the truck's capability, if the lifts are on or what. So I don't know if we had an update. I keep assuring them that it's a work in progress, that there's still studying routes. And I, believe it or not, I find those things can hold a lot of trash. But I saw one that not only was it full, the lid was open, it was on top, but there was maybe two or three trash cans around it. So, but if you, John, could you kind of update us on how the polycarp programs?
Yes. I wish I could say that the jury is fully in, but the initiation date for going to, or, I think the polycarps themselves, I think generally are just by themselves. My personal impression is there are when all the way around. Keeps water out. It's doing all the things that we said it is, easier to maneuver. The new going to one day a week route, I'd say the jury's still out on that. We started on the 27th of September. And so if you give a couple of weeks to, you know, start to learn the routes for the drivers, that's, that gives them a little bit of time. Of course, as soon as that happened, and what Steve Melton was doing was he was rotating the trucks in to get repairs. And these are repairs for things like lights, to make sure that they were DOT compliant. And of course, when he had one in for lights, the other one lost a turbo. And so then we have, we're trying to run the heaviest days of the week, which are Monday and Tuesday, which really require three trucks, but not with three trucks that even have remotely the same capability. So, I don't know, and then, once we have one of those two trucks back in service, it's Neil Walla week. So I don't know that we've had a typical week yet. That being said, I kind of alluded to a little bit earlier, the Monday and Tuesday routes seem to be a bit heavier as far as the number of houses and the number of people that we're hitting. So that is, so that, in my mind, if there's some future change in routes, it would be to lighten Monday and Tuesday routes and move that out to Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. And those routes have been very light in comparison to Monday and Tuesday and have given the sanitation folks the ability to go back through and dedicate crews to going and picking up bulky items, which had been a problem in the past. So I think we're already seeing some benefits on the bulky item side. I think we might need to do some later on. Again, I wouldn't want to do anything for six months or so until we have some solid data. Changing of routes on the Monday and Tuesday side. But again, I would say in a few more months, I think we'll have much better and more definitive data on it. I'm still very optimistic that it was absolutely the right move, but I just don't have data to prove it.
Okay. Well, it seems, you know, like in our, my neighborhood, it's, the street I live on, my side goes to the alley and the other side goes in front. So, you know, there's a lot of adjustment, but it looks like everybody's getting their card out and the guys are doing a great job.
You know, and they've worked really hard and, you know, I know that managing change is hard for the residents, but, and I've had some conversations with some of the residents of the city where I say, yeah, were we goofed up? It was absolutely our goof up. And I said, you know, I apologize because we're learning this too. So, I, my hats are off to that group.
Well, it's a significant change that is going to take a while to work out any potential bugs.
Yes.
But it's going, I appreciate it, John. On the RCA's where we've got projects that bid. If we had the architect or engineer's estimate included with those, it'll help, just give us an idea of where we are.
Absolutely.
How close and, and, and see if any, any questions come up from that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, we can absolutely add those to the RCA's.
That was, that was all I had. Thank you.
John, I just wanted to point out, because there has been some people that have contacted me. It has nothing to do with the pickup or the sanitation cards, none of that. But I want to encourage people that when you, when you put your sanitation card out for pickup, you know, you're advised to put it out the night before because it says pickup could be, could start early at five in the morning. So, my point that I want to make out to the people that watch this later, that are still listening to this, is that when your receptacle is empty, please remove it from the curb area and send it either back to the house or somewhere, rather than perpetually leaving it out there which it seems to indicate that there's continually trash still being picked up. So if people could do that, it would, it would make the appearance of a neighborhood look more uniform rather than a hodgepodge of some people are leaving them out on the curb. You know, they never move them. And others are doing that. So I would just encourage people that if they would take the time to do that, it would get a better appearance overall of the city. That's been pointed out to me by a couple of people. So, I just wanted to address that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. And we've already had our public concern. Oh, good, we're moving to adjournments. So, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, staff.